9:06 AM, consideration of update on COVID-19. And I see that we have Dr. Bloom with us in the Zoom room. See if we can, there we go.
I am here. For some reason, my video is not working here. It says, uh, the host has stopped it, unfortunately. Oh, hold on one second.
There we go. Welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. Uh, good morning, Board of Supervisors. Good morning, Chairman. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak with you this morning about our COVID-19 response. Um, as per usual, um, I'm going to give you a brief overview of how our cases are doing, our tier status, our vaccination rollout, and then I'm going to have Sarah, our epidemiologist, talk to us more in depth about, um, the data and the demographics, um, and then I'll be discussing some other topics, uh, a little bit more in depth. So, uh, without further ado, um, we are doing well with our cases. Our cases in the county remain low. They remain about level as they have been for the past few weeks. Um, for the week of the 25th to the 2nd, we've had 17 cases, uh, new cases in the county, which gives us a daily case rate of about 3.7 per 100,000, uh, and our testing positivity is 2.2%. So, uh, that is slightly above last week. That's in the low orange tier, uh, metrics, but still quite good, um, and virtually flat for a county of our size. Um, we are still quite far away in one metric, um, to the yellow tier, uh, as all of these other metrics are sort of teetering right on the edge of orange to yellow tier. Uh, and that metric is vaccination coverage. We are still far off of the state average for vaccination coverage, um, where the state is around 61% and the county is around 49% of, uh, the persons in the county receiving at least one dose of vaccination. Um, so again, on June 15th, all of these tiers will disappear and we will move on to, uh, general recommendations. Uh, and as you need to stay in with tier metrics for at least two weeks to be within that tier. So we would have to have yellow metrics for two weeks to become yellow. Uh, once again, I would anticipate, uh, staying in the orange tier for, uh, the rest of the next month, uh, until the tiers disappear in a month. As far as the vaccination status goes, we have a surplus of vaccine. We have all three vaccines, uh, J&amp;J, Moderna, and Pfizer. And so, uh, all 16 years of age and older in the county are eligible. Uh, and so I encourage people to get their vaccination if they have not done so. The age grade, excuse me, the age group from 18 to 49 is approximately 31%, uh, at least partially vaccinated. And the age group of 65 plus is 59% vaccinated. Those are the two groups which I will focus on later because I believe that they are the two groups that require the most, uh, work to increase the vaccination numbers. Um, but other than that, vaccination is, is moving along. Um, and, uh, with that, I'm going to pass it over to Sarah, uh, for further numbers from this week, uh, and then we'll dive back into the details.
Thank you, Dr. Bloom. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I have just a brief update. Statewide, we continue to see, um, good indicators, improving indicators. Uh, testing statewide, that's the graph on the left, was stable, um, from this week compared to last week. Um, and the testing positivity is hovering right around 1%, 1% to 1.3%. So really positive news. Testing is stable right now and testing positivity is at an all-time low. Um, as is the daily case rate. So the most recent, these data were reported yesterday, 3.7 cases per 100,000 at the state level, all-time low really since the beginning of the pandemic. Um, as Dr. Bloom shared, we remain in the orange tier based on metrics from April 25th to May 1st. The map shows you the 58 counties' status as of last week. Today, this will be updated and I suspect a few more counties moving into yellow. Um, but we'll note that the majority of the state's population, 60%, currently are in a orange tier indicating moderate transmission. Um, in Lake County, this is the Epi curve showing the number of new cases identified, uh, per week. So this week's metrics were based on this week of April 25th, when 17 cases were identified in the county. Um, and for the week we just finished, the week of May 2nd, to date have identified about 10 cases. So I'm pleased to see that we've been relatively stable the last couple of weeks with fewer than 20 cases, which is really positive. Switching gears into vaccine, vaccination coverage at the state level, um, about 63% of eligible Californians are at least partially vaccinated. And we can see by geography, there still remains a disparity. About 74% of people in quartile four at least partially vaccinated compared to about 50% of people in quartile one. So the state is focusing on communities with, um, lower vaccination coverage, trying to increase coverage in, uh, quartile one and quartile two. Um, over 27,000 people in Lake County are at least partially vaccinated. That's 52% of Lake County residents, 16 years of age and older. Um, 41% of people are fully vaccinated. Um, I'll make a note here on the data. Previously, federal data was not integrated into the California Immunization Registry. I just got a note that it has been. Um, so I will be confirming this with the state data team, but my understanding at the moment is doses administered through any federal programs which would include IHS should now be included. Um, again, I will confirm this, but wanted to note that because I'm reporting these slightly differently because of this, this, um, notice that I received. So over half of the eligible population, it now has at least partial, um, uh, protection through the vaccine. And wanted to share, you know, take a closer look at who has been getting their first dose since, um, everyone over the age of 16 became eligible on April 15th. So that's what this slide shows. It shows Lake County residents who received their first dose between April 15th and May 7th. Um, and that was over 2,500 people. Um, and you can see the distribution by age group, um, by where they live. Um, and that 52% of doses went to males. Um, you know, this doesn't, I want to just know what I think these data tell us and what they don't tell us. Um, the question of vaccine hesitancy is, is hard to fully answer, so these data don't tell us that. Uh, but they do tell us over the last three weeks or so, um, where people are, you know, are getting their first dose. Um, and so I think that's important to think about and look at your communities and see if you think there's opportunities to improve, um, vaccine messaging, um, in those places. What I do think is really important to note here, looking at vaccination coverage by combined ZIP codes, um, is that about each week, or about every week, we see about a one percentage point increase in these ZIP codes to 38% of people at least partially vaccinated and now about 51% of people partially vaccinated in these ZIP codes. Um, I think it's really, there's opportunities particularly in ZIP code 95422 to really focus vaccination efforts as, um, that is one of the communities with the lower, uh, lower coverage right now. Though it is increasing steadily each week, it still remains, um, lower than the, the county average. And I think that's in a large part due to the, the tiered system and eligibility to get the vaccine out as it was rolled out. But now that everyone is eligible, I think there's a great opportunity to target, um, communities that didn't perhaps have it available to them since the beginning and really work to increase that coverage, at least at the, to the county average. Um, and I'll note here, um, the, we continue to see, again, relatively, um, between Latinos and white non-Hispanic residents, um, sort of on par every week with the increase in, uh, coverage. So 42% of Latinos, uh, at least partially vaccinated and 45% of white non-Hispanics at least partially vaccinated. And then lastly, noting vaccination coverage by age group. Um, so an estimated 6% of, um, people 16 and 17 years of age have gotten at least one dose. 31% of people 18 to 49, which is our largest age group here at about 22,000 people, um, are at least partially or fully vaccinated. 61% of people 50 to 64 and 59% of people over the 65 and older. I'll note that I think this is also a really important population here, the 65 plus. Um, the increase in vaccination coverage among this group has really slowed, um, in the last couple of weeks. And there's still 41% of people, um, 41% of 17,000 people who, um, have not, uh, had, uh, at least one dose. And so I think this is an important population because they may be higher risk due to their age and other factors. As I think, um, this younger age group, where 31% of people have received at least one dose is an important group and perhaps an opportunity to target as, um, younger people become eligible for the vaccine. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Bloom to speak more about, um, vaccination coverage. Thank you.
Nope, you're muted, Dr. Bloom.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much for the reminder. Um, thank you, Sarah. Uh, so just to go, uh, a little bit further into the details, um, again, the cases are going well. Um, last week, uh, there were 17 new cases, which gives us a case rate of 3.7 per 100,000, which is actually the same as the state as it is currently. Um, and our testing positivity was 2.2% uh, with the state hovering around 1 to 1.3%. So just minimally higher. It's really about the same considering the size of our county. So this is actually quite good news. This is very low. Um, and so all I can say is keep it up, uh, because we are doing well in this respect. Um, as far as the tiers go, this level again is a low orange tier. Um, and, uh, and we're hovering right around, uh, that, uh, line to move into the yellow tier with metrics. Um, except for the vaccine coverage, which, uh, has to be within 5% of the state average. And as Sarah just said, and I misstated earlier as I was using, uh, data that was a little bit older as we, we only get the data, uh, very shortly before the board meeting. Um, the state vaccine coverage is actually at 63% uh, with at least one, uh, vaccine dose being given. And in Lake County, we are at 52%. I misstated before. I said 49. Um, so we are at 52%. Um, this work to increase the vaccination coverage, um, to our goal, uh, which is to be within 5% of the state average and our overall goal, uh, which is to be at 70%, um, will be certainly slower than it has been in the past and it will be more difficult, um, and targeted. Uh, so there's still plenty of work to be done, um, but our goal is still to be 70% uh, of the population of Lake County to be vaccinated and to be fully vaccinated, not just partially vaccinated. That would be if you have a two-vaccine dose of either the Moderna or the Pfizer, that you do receive those two doses for your full vaccination coverage. Um, and that is our goal. Uh, regarding the tiers, once again, in, uh, on June 15th, the tiers will go away. There, uh, will be further guidance from the state, but it's going to be in line with what we've already been doing with masking and distancing. Um, but the actual, uh, red, orange, purple, uh, yellow tiers will disappear. Um, speaking of that, there have been some changes from the state that I did want to talk about regarding masking, regarding distancing, uh, now that, uh, there is a good percentage of the state that is vaccinated. Um, the CDPH, uh, the Public Health Department for the state, um, on May 3rd has, uh, put out new guidance, um, particularly broken down for those who are fully vaccinated and those who are not fully vaccinated. So I wanted to mention what these new state guidelines are. For those fully vaccinated, um, if you are fully vaccinated, again, and I want to be clear with the definition here, fully vaccinated is that you have received two vaccine doses. If you have the Pfizer, Pfizer or the Moderna vaccine. And if you got the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which is only one dose, um, then you have received your dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine and you have given yourself two weeks for your body to be taught how to respond to COVID and have that vaccine disappear out of your body. Um, but you have given your body time to learn and to protect yourself. So it's two vaccines or the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, um, and then two weeks after. Uh, and after that, you're considered fully vaccinated. So if you are fully vaccinated, um, and you are outdoors, then you do not need to wear a mask. Um, the requirements of mask-wearing for outdoors have gone away for fully vaccinated persons, unless you are in a crowded environment such as a festival, a large music venue with many people around, um, a street fair, something of that nature, sporting event. Uh, then the recommendation is still masking in a crowded outdoor environment. But other than that, you do not need to wear your mask outside if you are fully vaccinated. Um, if you are inside, uh, and you are fully vaccinated and you are with other fully vaccinated people and there is no one there that is unvaccinated, but it's all fully vaccinated people, then you also do not need to wear your mask and you do not have to maintain social distancing at all times if you are all fully vaccinated. Um, now, so just to repeat that, if you're inside with fully vaccinated people and you yourself are fully vaccinated, you do not need to wear your mask, you do not need to distance. If you choose to, that's fine. Um, but thi- this is the current state guidance. Now, if you are indoors, uh, and you are with people who are not vaccinated, so for example, if you were on public transit, if you were in a business, um, and you don't know if people around you, uh, are, are vaccinated or not, you still need to follow the guidelines. You still need to mask. You still need to, uh, remain socially distanced uh, as, uh, certainly you don't know the other people around you and their vaccination status. Um, now, I wanted to discuss if you are not vaccinated. If you are not fully vaccinated, meaning if you have only received one dose or it has not been two weeks yet after your second dose of the Pfizer or the Moderna vaccine, um, then you are considered, uh, not fully vaccinated. And you still should be wearing face coverings while outside if you cannot distance yourself appropriately from other people. Uh, and then certainly the same would go for if you're in a crowded situation like a fair, like a concert, uh, like a sporting event, then you absolutely, uh, should be masking, uh, during that event. Um, if you are indoors and you are not fully vaccinated, then you absolutely, uh, should be wearing your mask and you should be socially, socially distancing as you have been for the, uh, entirety of the pandemic. Um, and those are the, the major changes. Um, I should also mention one other, uh, change, uh, which is that if you are fully vaccinated again, if you're fully vaccinated and, uh, you are visiting persons within one family, one family group, um, who are unvaccinated, uh, the recommendation is that you do not have to wear your mask for that. But if you're in a setting where you're visiting multiple people from multiple families, it's still, uh, to mask in that indoor situation. There are other changes. Um, those are the ones I wanted to highlight. Uh, but if you would like to see the full exhaustive list of changes, um, then you can visit CDPH, cdph.ca.gov, which is the, uh, Public Health Department's website for the state for the list of all of the changes. So moving on, I wanted to talk about the vaccine rollout. So as Sarah has mentioned, demand has slowed a little bit, uh, with the, uh, vaccine rollout, in particular in the 65-plus age group and somewhat for the 18 to 49, uh, age group. So, uh, first, the 65-plus population, uh, which is 59% vaccinated, really that number hasn't moved that much. And as Sarah mentioned, at least 41% of those in the highest, um, vulnerability for a death and for morbidity, meaning, um, symptoms and significant long-term damage possibly if you contract COVID. Um, those most vulnerable are, uh, are still significantly undervaccinated. Uh, so our work needs to be within this group. Um, and so the efforts at this point will be targeted towards this group still. Um, and if you were in this group and you wish to get vaccinated, there are many opportunities to do so. You can go to MyTurn, um, which is the state scheduling web, website and schedule your dose. Um, and then there are also locations that you can look for within the county, uh, that, uh, will be providing walk-in service without vaccinate, oh, excuse me, without an appointment. Um, again, I wanted to mention the 18 to 49 age group because that is the largest population, uh, within the county when we look at these, uh, age group demographics and therefore, um, it's the most important that that group, considering these are the largest ages, age group walking around, um, uh, in the county and interacting, that this age group be vaccinated and we are still only at 31% vaccinated for this group. This number is increasing. Um, you know, part of that reason is because, uh, the, of the rollout of the vaccination. So that's been, uh, pretty much the least amount of time, um, that the vaccine has been available to this age group. Um, but still, uh, this age group is, uh, lagging behind state averages. And so, uh, we want to target this age group as well, um, for, for their protection and vaccination. And especially because in family units, this is the age group that is moving around and visiting those who are, uh, a little bit more aged in the 65-plus, uh, population. And so to protect your family and to protect your loved ones, um, and not carry this, uh, this virus to them, uh, would be why we want this age group to become vaccinated and decrease the likelihood of transmission. I wanted to speak for a moment, um, about, uh, the fact that we have all of the vaccines. Uh, as I mentioned before, the Moderna, the Pfizer and the J&amp;J vaccine, and we are very fortunate for this. There are many places, um, in the world who are unfortunately, uh, experiencing, um, a very, very high disease burden and disease rate from COVID-19 and attack rate. Um, and we in Lake County are very fortunate that we have access to these vaccines and you can get them if you want them and you can get the protection. Um, so that is why I'm harping on this, uh, because we should not, uh, pass over the fact that we are very fortunate and that we live in a place where we have access to this. Um, so please take advantage of it. I wanted to talk, uh, about our plans from the Department of Public Health at this point in the setting of some decreased, uh, vaccination demand. Um, so the Department of Public Health has been having these, uh, large drive-through clinics in Lakeport and in Clearlake. And we have been in the process of demobilizing these clinics as there are now many other locations to obtain vaccine such as Safeway, such as pharmacies, such as, um, the OptumServe sites, which are in Lakeport and also in Lower Lake, um, such as Walmart, uh, or your health system, Adventist or Sutter. So actually tomorrow, which is May 12th, that is the last day that these, uh, drive-through sites will be up and will be functioning and they will be delivering second doses. Uh, and then after tomorrow, uh, these sites will be going away. This is just the Department of Public Health drive-through sites. Um, uh, as far as people who are scheduled, uh, for the dates after this, um, they have been moved to, uh, the alternate, um, OptumServe sites or other sites to obtain, uh, the vaccinations. So with the Department of Public Health, I wanted to briefly talk about our next steps in the setting of, of talking about these, uh, different tiers, these different, excuse me, tiers, these different age groups and the slowing, uh, vaccination demands. So with the demobilization of these larger, uh, drive-through vaccination sites, uh, the Department of Public Health, uh, will be now focusing more, uh, on, uh, more targeted vaccination, uh, meaning, uh, pop-up sites and mobile site, uh, vaccination, uh, clinics in areas, uh, that, uh, we would like to help obtain access to have this vaccination. So as Sarah discussed, there are certain ZIP codes in the HPI-1 quartile, uh, that are, uh, lower in their rate of vaccination uptake and therefore, uh, they will be targeted, uh, a bit more for, uh, vaccination access, vaccine access, um, to provide this opportunity, uh, for vaccination to these areas of the county. We are also going to continue messaging about the importance of vaccination um, and, uh, plan on doing some targeted messaging, uh, to various different populations, uh, that have lower vaccination uptake. We also are planning to leverage our county partners, uh, to deliver vaccine at trusted locations with, uh, our trusted partnering groups to, uh, help to, uh, combat vaccine hesitancy and to help to discuss vaccine hesitancy with those who are hesitant, um, to help to, uh, deliver that vaccination to, uh, people who are somewhat on the line and not sure if they want to get vaccinated or not. Um, so by discussing it with your doctor and then also by, um, having the vaccine available through trusted groups, um, this is our, our next step at targeted, uh, vaccine access to slowly and incrementally increase the vaccination coverage within our county. I also wanted to, for a moment, talk about children. Uh, as we discussed before, the 16-plus population is now eligible for vaccination. However, soon in the future, I anticipate that the 12-year-old and higher, uh, or more aged population over 12 years old will be eligible for vaccination, uh, with the Pfizer vaccine. This is the communication, uh, that has been coming out of the FDA and this is what I wholly anticipate. Um, therefore, um, I would anticipate that this is going to happen in the near future and that these vaccines will be, uh, available, or at least the Department of Public Health is planning for these vaccinations to be available through your regular vaccine provider. So that would generally be your regular pediatrician or your regular clinician, uh, for your child, uh, who provides your other vaccines. Additionally, the vaccine will like, the Pfizer vaccine for children will likely be, uh, available through select other vaccination sites, as I had mentioned previously, whether that be pharmacies or Safeway or OptumServe. Um, and, uh, and I would anticipate that moving forward. So in conclusion, um, cases continue to be low and I anticipate them to continue to be, uh, moving along in this very slight up and down movement, but basically at a low plateau. Uh, we are in the orange tier. We are still right on that yellow line. Uh, but, uh, with the vaccination coverage, we are still, uh, significantly far away from the state average. So if we can reach that within 5% of that state average, um, and keep our numbers so low, there is a very slight possibility that we could move into the yellow tier prior to June 15th when all the tiers go away. Uh, but I think that that's a low likelihood and so I would just plan on being in, with the orange tier restrictions and metrics, um, uh, until that goes away on the, uh, 15th of June. Um, as far as vaccination coverage, as I mentioned, uh, there is a slightly decreased, uh, demand. Um, and so the, the targeting is going to be for the 65-plus age group, um, which has stagnated a bit uh, as that is the most at-risk age group, um, and the 18 to 49, uh, year-old age group. I wanted to reiterate one more time the new guidelines for those fully vaccinated, that you can be, uh, outside, uh, without a mask. Um, and you can also be inside with others who are fully vaccinated, as long as everyone there is fully vaccinated, without a mask and without having to social distance. Uh, but you may do so if you want to. Um, if you are in- If you are in a location where you are in a crowded location, you have to wear your mask still. And if you are not vaccinated and you are outside and you cannot maintain social distance, you have to wear your mask. And if you are inside and you are unvaccinated, you have to wear your mask and still remain socially distanced. And then lastly, if you are anybody, if you are in a public location such as, that is indoors, such as on public transit or in a business, then the recommendation is still that you wear your mask and that you socially distance if you're in any environment where there is, there could be people who are vaccinated and unvaccinated. Where to get your vaccination? I think I've mentioned that a few times already. You can go to MyTurn. You can schedule your vaccination. There are some locations doing walk-ins, such as Walmart and OptumServe sites. The OptumServe sites are in Lakeport and in Lower Lake. And so there are many, many sites to get your vaccination, so please do so. And please, if you are hesitant, if you are not sure, if you are waiting to see, please talk to your healthcare provider who you trust to discuss this as there are many millions now of vaccinations that have been given. And this is a safe and effective way to combat this disease. And I highly recommend that you go to get your vaccine so that you can get protected and your family can become protected. Again, all the vaccines are available, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Moderna, and Pfizer. All those sixteen years of age and older are eligible. And soon it will be twelve years of age and older, as I have just discussed. And lastly, we are keeping our eyes on that goal of seventy percent coverage, which would give our county a significant protection against COVID-19 and its horrible effects. So with that, I'm going to end my presentation. Thank you very much for your patience and for listening, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Dr. Bloom, and thank you to Sarah as well. Jessica, Supervisor Pyska.
Thank you, Dr. Bloom, for that presentation. I have a couple of questions. First, do we have an understanding on what the age groups are for the people that are testing positive these days?
I actually will ask that to Sarah, if she's still on the line, as I don't have the specific breakdowns. I will say that when I last went over this with Sarah, I still thought that it was not one specific age group. But I will defer that because I don't want to give you an incorrect answer if Sarah is still here.
I do not see that she is still here with us on Zoom.
Supervisor Pyska, that is a good question, and I will, I don't want to give you the wrong answer. So I'm going to defer that, and I will get that answer to you.
Oh, thank you so much. So she mentioned that she was adding in the IHHS patients or clients. And I was just wondering what percentage of those have been vaccinated so that, you know, maybe that's a group that we could work a little harder to assist.
And with that, I actually don't have the data, and I'm sorry to say that again. I don't have the data in front of me for that. My understanding was many of those clients are vaccinated at this point. But again, I will get you that data specifically. As much as I have access to, I will get to you so that you can see the data. And that is a good point.
Thanks. So one of the things that I hear frequently is everybody I know has either had it or is vaccinated. So what is the guidance on for people that have already gone through COVID? And what's the recommendation there? I'm fairly sure that we still want them to get vaccinated, but I'd just like to hear that from you, what your thoughts are.
You are absolutely correct, absolutely. So the guidance is if you have had COVID, that you still become vaccinated. If you have had COVID, then it is likely that you do have some protection. You probably do have some immune protection from that infection. That is how the body works. And that is how the vaccines work, is that they expose your body to a certain protein that is on the virus so that your body can recognize the virus when it comes into your body. It's a non-infectious protein from the virus that is what the vaccine is trying to show your body so that you can recognize the actual virus when it shows up. So if you've had the virus, then you do have most likely some coverage, some immunization and protection from the virus. The problem is that there are a number of variants to the virus, and it's unknown exactly how much coverage and how much protection you actually have by being infected by COVID-19 if you've had it previously. And it's been shown that actually your protection is significantly increased if you do get the vaccine, even if you've had the infection previously. So while you still may have some protection from having had COVID-19, it's unknown exactly how long that protection lasts. And it's probably for a few months afterwards. Again, that's not an official recommendation from myself, but just based on how immunization works and what we've been seeing, it's probably some level of protection that's greater than zero for a few months after you've had COVID-19. But going, moving on beyond that, the protection is likely less than you would get from the vaccine. And it is for a shorter period of time than you would get from the vaccine. And then there's questions about the variants, which with the vaccine, the protection that you get from the vaccine has been shown that it's active against a number of different variants. But we don't have any data or really any very good knowledge about, you know, what you would get, what kind of protection you would get from if you were actually infected with the virus, as it's really difficult to do any sort of scientific study on that. So that being said, that is why, a little bit further explanation, why it's recommended that you get the vaccination even if you've had a COVID infection previously. You can think of it somewhat as almost, although it's not this in actuality, but it's somewhat similar to obtaining a booster shot. You've had some sort of immunization from actually having the virus, but having the vaccination will increase that protection significantly and should protect you over a longer period of time.
Would it be helpful to do some targeted messaging on that topic?
Certainly, that can, that has not been a focus, but that's a good idea. And I think that that would not be a bad thing to do. So yes, thank you for the suggestion. We can absolutely do that. It's been more focused on, please get the vaccine. But at this point, yes, that can absolutely be put out as well.
Great. And I just, I'm really glad to hear that. We're going to start with the pop-up and mobile sites because I think that's really going to help access the people that are having a difficult time getting in. So I appreciate you answering all my questions. Thank you.
I'm sure. It's my pleasure. Any other comments or questions from supervisors? Okay, I do have just a quick soapbox issue. It's, no matter how hard we try to reach the criteria that we're told we need to reach in order to get to a different level of restriction, it seems we get hit with another criteria that prohibits us from moving forward. And I have to share my frustration that if you look at the list of vaccination rates on a per-county basis, those who are of affluence are at the higher levels of vaccination rates, and those of poverty are on the lower levels of vaccination rates. And that should not be a burden on our businesses. That is an equity issue that the state tried to work on but failed to meet. And that should not be a restriction that we're placed on. We are doing our best. We've been underneath the two percent before. Today, we're not. We've been kind of going below and above that line. But everything shows that our hospital rates are great, our deaths are great. We haven't seen those types of burdens like we saw back in December, January. And yet now we're being burdened with, sorry, but you don't have enough people that are getting vaccinated. And when you say you have to be within five percent of the state average, and there is such disparity with the highest levels of vaccinations versus the lowest levels of vaccinations, I just have issues with that. And so I just wanted to express that. I have been expressing that through my CSAC contacts with the state. We have to be able to make us feel like we're progressing and not constantly being shown new barriers because they decided to change the rules on us. And that's why I can't wait for June 15th, for that tier system to just disappear. Because it seems it's been a bit of a mess ever since we started with that tier system. I did ask that same question. I didn't directly ask through the public health, but I'm also interested in, even if it doesn't show us anything that we can utilize data-wise, I think it'd be interesting to see who's still getting COVID-19. Does it show, does it help us in showing that vaccination works based on the percentage of vaccination on those age groups and looking at those age groups now and who's getting COVID-19? I just think it would be useful data to at least review and look at and hopefully maybe even utilize in our mission to get people to accept and say yes to taking the vaccine. And so hopefully that's data that we can get maybe within the next couple of weeks, and we can go ahead and dive into that. Appreciate your presentation. And if there's no further comments or questions from the board, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. I see no public comment here in the boardroom. And I see one hand up over in the Zoom room. And Madeline Tuttle, I just sent you an unmute message, I believe.
Okay, yes, this is actually Dr. Will Tuttle. I'm on my wife's iPad here. And yeah, thanks for the report. So now, as of April 26th, there are over thirty, three thousand eight hundred people have died, according to the Vaccine Adverse Effect Reporting System, which reports between one and ten percent of deaths. This is more than in twenty years of the vaccine reporting system, just in four months. Over sixteen thousand six serious injuries, again, one, only one to ten percent at most are reported. So we're talking about a so-called vaccine with unprecedented levels of death and serious disease and complications and injuries. And we're being told and we're being deceived that this is safe and effective. According to the Supreme Court, when they actually gave the pharmaceutical industry blanket immunity back in nineteen ninety, they said, quote, "that vaccines are inherently unsafe," end quote. So that's why they gave them blanket immunity. And they've, since then, made so much money that they've captured the mainstream media. They've completely captured CDC. They've completely captured the medical school people. So they're basically deceiving us. And these are crimes against humanity that are being rolled out. And people are being very seriously injured by this. We're going against the Nuremberg Principles, which require that people who are in an experimental protocol, that they be fully informed. And they're not, people are not being positively fully informed. People are being lied to that these are safe and effective. That's why they're getting vaccinated. These are not vaccines. These have never been approved by the FDA. They've only been authorized for emergency use. And so under this emergency use, people are being lied to. Anyone who tries to question the efficacy or the safety of these vaccines is censored. And so this is a terrible situation where, when similar things happened in Germany or in other places, and people ended up going to jail for this kind of behavior that you're engaging in, you're going, you should be going to jail, according to the Nuremberg Principles, of deceiving people and not allowing a full, accurate accounting of what's actually happening to people because of this. And also, the test, the PCR test is being monkeyed with now. The CDC, this is amazing. I mean, the CDC has allowed the amplification rate to be around thirty-five to forty amplifications. So that's going to guarantee to give lots of positives, false positives, to make it look like we have a terrible pandemic. And now what they've just done is said that anyone who is vaccinated, you should only use twenty-six amplifications, which is going to show nobody gets sick. Nobody's test is positive if you're vaccinated. So this whole thing is based on deception and lies, just like the way the, these pharmaceutical industries. You have Pfizer, which is the most criminal company in the history of the United States, with multiple charges of racketeering and deception and lying to people. Horrible. All of these are criminal organizations. And you're basically just aiding and abetting criminal organizations and hurting people and not giving another, the other side. And I think it's incredibly irresponsible that you have, you have to do due diligence and actually look at what the data says. The number one epidemiologist in the United States, Johnny Amidis of Stanford University, has said-
Dr. Tuttle, it's been three minutes. Please go ahead and finish.
Finish up. Has the same death rate or mortality as the flu. So we're doing all of this, and masking has been shown to be completely ineffective. It's harming people. So I really want to say you've got to look at the other side. Thank you very much.
I have a quick question for you, Dr. Tuttle, and I mean no disrespect at all. But what is your doctorate in?
I have a PhD from UC Berkeley in education. And I took courses in public health and qualitative and quantitative research methodologies. And I understand science, and we don't have science today. What we have today is-
And that, I don't need a longer answer than that. You've already answered it. I just wanted to let the public know that you are not a medical doctor and you are providing an opinion based on your knowledge and your understanding. I just want to make sure that when somebody says doctor in a conversation about a virus, that people understand who is speaking and from what level of expertise they are speaking from.
Right. But there's many doctors who agree with what I'm saying, MDs.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And just real quick, Dr. Bloom, if you wanted to respond to any of that at all or not?
I just want to respond by saying that I appreciate the points of view. I appreciate the concern. There are many points of view which are based on rumors, which are based on different areas of science in our day and age now with Twitter and with social media. And then also based on personal belief and cultural belief. That's why public health is difficult. So what Dr. Tuttle was saying regarding a number of these different areas is that, you know, there are problems with masking. There are, he has problems with masking and problems with vaccination and a number of tried and true and proven and safe public health measures to battle infectious disease. And we're talking about public health measures in general. So I appreciate his personal points of view. And this is part of the conversation that we want to have with people regarding hesitancy because there is a lot of disinformation out there, and then there is science. And science is what we are basing our approach to keep our residents safe on. Science is always what is leading our charge and what is driving the way that we are approaching this pandemic. We are listening to the experts. We are constantly engaged with the federal government and with the State Department of Public Health, who has always been here and exists, exists to protect the population and to protect you. And it is based on science and based on studies through a scientific process. And so that is why we are doing what we are doing. And this is what public health is. This is why we do what we do, to try to protect you and to help you and to engage with you with your concerns. with your concerns. We are not an organization here to tell you what to do. We are here to partner with you and to help you lead a good life and to stay healthy. That, that is, that is why I'm here. That is what we do. And that is all that I would like to say about that, and I appreciate all of the comments.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bloom. We have another hand up, Jessica S. And, oops, I'm so sorry, I may have just muted you. No, there you are.
I think, I think I got it, all right. Hi, my name's Jessica Snell. I am a new resident in Lake County, and I just kind of wanted to get involved with the city council a little bit and, and share my thoughts and opinions on, on the vaccine and masking and everything. As much as, you know, we all have our separate opinions and things that we believe, like I really believe that we all just want to see, you know, the common good and, and for everyone to be healthy and well, and I respect everyone's opinions and, you know, as much as I want to believe science, I, I mostly hear what's going on is statistics rather than the science behind it. And, you know, I've, I've been a pro-masker, pro-vaccinator for my whole life up until last year, because, you know, the, what is, what has been happening in our country has been very apparent, and as, as Will was talking about, the Big Pharma and the pharmaceutical companies that, that place these orders in line for people as, as a positive thing, but we've seen, you know, the epidemic of, of pain pills and the deaths and addiction rates of those. And to say that we should fully put 100% trust into the guidelines being set in place is, you know, I, I believe that everyone should have their own right and their own choice, and that a lot of this is, is a means of separation and, and status. You know, as someone else was saying, you know, there, the poverty rates and those vaccination rates are very, very low. Meanwhile, the higher percentage, like, are very privileged to, to have the opportunity to be vaccinated or not. And, and when it all boils down to it, it really is a personal choice. And I think what most people who, who may not want to get the vaccine are trying to get across is that we kind of don't want to be alienated to not enjoying our lives and having that freedom to go outside and, and be unmasked and, and, you know, have to show a card to get into a music festival or something like that. It just seems like we're going back in time to those days of mass separation and anxieties and, and, you know, I don't, I don't want it to boil down to losing friends or family over these things, but I've had experience with these vaccinations. I've witnessed it firsthand, it making people very, very ill. And, you know, as much as I want to believe the statistics and, and science behind it, I, I have to go with my gut feeling and what I've seen with my own two eyes in this world and this country and what's been happening the past year and a half. And it's just the things that I've experienced alone has just, it's kind of opened my eyes. You know, at first I was really preaching to everyone, wear their masks and sanitize and, and, you know, stay safe out there, but after living in Los Angeles for a year and not getting COVID even once, and, you know, staying very safe, of course, but I just, I've learned a lot over the past year and a half on, on how, how things are run and, and who is running the country. And as much as I, like I said, I want to believe in the statistics and the science and the news behind it all, like I really have to go with my gut feeling, and I just, I just want to see less separation and more empathy towards everyone and, and everyone just being healthy, you know, generally. And, and hopefully we can all come to a common ground to, to find a way that we can all feel comfortable and free and, and willing to, to work together to kind of just make a common end to, to all of this, really. So that's, that's really all I have to say. I don't, I don't know, I'm, I'm not a doctor. I don't have any status suture for that, but I, I am well-educated and I have done my research for many years and, and I rest assured in that. So thank you, and thank you guys for being here and sharing your thoughts as well.
All right, thank you very much. And there is no further comments. There is a repeat, but we're behind schedule, so we're going to go ahead and continue moving forward. Any further comments from the board? Supervisor Pyska?
So I do appreciate the dialogue and the comments today, and, you know, it's important for us to recognize we are in this good place because of science and because of all the work that's happened over the year. And it is a choice to have a vaccine, and we, we're not, no one is forced to do that. It's your choice in this country. But as Dr. Bloom mentioned, there are other places around the world where people are suffering, and they don't have that choice and that privilege right now. And I think it's just an important time for us to recognize that.
Thank you for the comment. Any further comments before we go ahead and close this item? All right, Dr. Bloom, thank you very much to you and your staff, and tomorrow being the last day, I do want to appreciate the fact that your clinics that have been set up over the course of the last few months have been outstanding and have been absolutely helpful in getting our populations vaccinated and helping to decrease the burden of this unfortunate pandemic that still continues. So thank you so much to your staff and your team, and hoping that rest is coming soon.
Thank you very much. The team has been absolutely tireless and fantastic, and I wanted to express my thanks as well, and I do appreciate that. Thank you.
All right.